Call to order, the City Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. Commissioner Oderman is joining us via the video this evening. First item up this evening is the Order of Business. Mr. Winningham, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Mr. President, there is no changes to the Order of Business.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions on the Order of Business? Now I look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Mr. President, move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on Order of Business? Not all in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss? There is one item on the Consent Agenda that I wish to, just for the general public, in the Consent Agenda, in moving forward, any city boards and committees will not have them on the Consent Agenda, it'll be out in the general meeting, but just to let the general public know, these are appointments for city boards and committees, and this evening, we are reappointing for planning and zoning Scott Bullinger, he desired reappointment. Board of Adjustments, Sean Soren and Bruce Burke. Civil Service Terry DeVorek, Dickinson Public Library Paula Martin, and the Dickinson Municipal Airport Authority Marcus Powell. Are there any other items that Commissioners wish to talk about on the Consent Agenda? Now I look for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the Consent Agenda. Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We do have a few items this evening on the 5:00 timetable. We'll jump right into the regular agenda, and the first item up is in Administration and Finance, and that's our fee schedule, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Okay, better. What you have in front of you is a resolution, according to our ordinance 1086, we have a resolution each year approving of what we've done in the past Commission meetings, that we have approved the fee schedule for the changes coming in 2021. So this resolution is recommendation of staff to approve the fee schedule as is, which was, will be held in the City Administration Office, and it's on our website, and it's been in our agenda here too. So if you have any questions, I'd stand for...
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the fee schedule, or any questions for any of the And this would be Resolution 01 of 2021, our very first one. So if there are no questions on the fee schedule, I'd look for a motion on 01-2021.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions on Resolution 01-2021? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is our COVID response update, and that will be handled by City Administrator
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is a resolution that extends the city's responsibilities under the CARES Act that was recently renewed. One item on this resolution that we have changed is the resolution, or is the law that was extended in Congress did not require employers to continue to pay employees if they were out due to COVID. The intent of this resolution is to still pay our employees that 80 hours, up to 80 hours, under the COVID-listed requirements, there are six requirements in there that was in our previous resolution. We feel that we are making an effort to keep our employees safe, and the city will bear the cost of that 80 hours that we would give employees for COVID-related illnesses. That amount is budgeted within the city's budget. Anything over that, the employees would use their sick time, their leave time, and potentially FMLA or Family Leave Act, that 12 weeks it's unpaid. That's the resolution that's up for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions for Mr. Winningham on this resolution, which is 02-2021? Any questions for Mr. Winningham or staff? Hearing no questions, look for a motion on 02-2021.
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution 02-2021.
We have a motion to approve 02-2021 by Commissioner Walla.
Well, seconded.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions on Resolution 02-2021? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item up, we have a upgrade to the curator position, and this will be handled by our Human Resources Coordinator, Mrs. Nomenek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, so the update for the job description for the curator is before you. This was budgeted in the 2021 budget for the position to be reclassified. The added duties to this job description would include supervisory, supervision of professional paleontology staff and the volunteers at the museum. The position will also serve in a general supervisory capacity in the absence of the Museum Center Director. With these changes, the job description did score at 800 points and will fall in Class 4, Grade 9, which will also make the position exempt, and city staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on this position upgrade? Hearing no question?
Move to approve. Sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up, we have a report by City Administrator Winningham, and it is a thank you for Deputy City Administrator Carlson and Police Chief Dossinger. Mr. Winningham?
Mr. President and Commissioners, I just wanted to put this on the public docket so that we could publicly acknowledge Deputy City Administrator Carlson for all the hard work that she has put in place and endured to try to keep things, the ship, moving in the right direction. As the interim, it's a thankless type of job, you still have to do the job that the city is paying you for, and then you're still responsible for somebody else's job until they get here. So I just want to publicly say thank you for the transition and the time that I've spent being provided all the reports and information so that we can continue on with the city's work. Also, Chief Dossinger also stood the ground and shared the responsibilities as a city administrator partially, and did an incredible job keeping the city moving in the right direction, and then also providing me a clear transition, or at least the reports and information that I think I needed in order to start this job. So I just want to say thank you to both of them.
I would also like to say thank you. I know there's a lot to put on your plate for that time period, that we, a lot of moving parts, a lot of things that need to get done, the absence of a city administrator, and I really, I do appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have no items this evening in public safety or engineering. We'll move into Public Works, and we have a front-end loader bid, and this will be presented by Operation Manager Clem.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I also have a little PowerPoint I put together. In front of you also is a memorandum of what we sent out for bid. We sent our bid out, as you see here on the PowerPoint, we sent the proposal out to RDO Butler Machinery in Titan. RDO coming in considerably a little bit lower, $23,000, and some change underneath Butler, and $35,000, $38,000 underneath Titan. What we're asking is approval to purchase the RDO, oops, it's a 634L loader, I'll put a picture up there just where you guys can get a visual on it. The bid was, the budget was based off of the numbers that was received earlier in the year, based off of $333,000, so on a seven-year payout, we'll be actually saving with going to RDO, we'll be saving about $26,000, a little over $26,000 a year if we get approval to purchase the RDO loader. Then, we also have a half-ton truck that we are...
Mr. Clem, we just got to handle one at a time here.
Okay.
We got to approve that first bid. I do appreciate the enthusiasm. Move us along.
Lights me out, I thought it was time to go, so...
Any questions for Mr. Clem on the front-end loader bid? And this goes straight into street maintenance?
Yes, sir.
And we're trading one in, right?
Yes, sir. The value that, on the trade-in, that RDO is going to give us is $53,000.
Okay. Pretty much across the board, it seems pretty even, trade-in value.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Clem on this bid for new front-end loader for the Street Maintenance Department?
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve...
RDO bid.
We have a motion to approve the RDO bid by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions, comments on this bid? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now let's hear about that truck.
Our next proposal that we are seeking approval on is the purchase of a half-ton Chevy Silverado. We sent three bid proposals out, also looked at the state, and even though Sachs Motors is a little bit higher than Charminow, we were requesting to go with Sachs Motors due to quite a few issues that you'll see in front of you on the memorandum. There was a total of 19 specs that Charminow did not meet. Also, the bidding and the proposal process, the bid wasn't sealed, a lot of stuff that didn't meet the standards. And then on the state, when we looked at the state, there was 24 on one that didn't meet specs, and on the other one it was 19. We did send the proposal out to the three locals, Red Rock, Charminow, and Sachs. Red Rock did not submit a bid or proposal back to us, so the budget is $36,000, we requested, a little bit over. We can make some reservations and take the extended warranty off, which is $2,334, to bring that down if that is going to hinge in approval.
Give me an example of like, what, some of the 12 things that wouldn't meet expert...
The first thing, they didn't meet heated mirrors, they didn't have the tow package. On the back, on the page that you guys, that is submitted to you guys, they didn't specify some warranties, the envelope wasn't sealed, the seven-pin electric connector, it wasn't standard, there actually is an upcharge. Aluminum wheels, which it wouldn't make a difference whether aluminum or steel. Tow hooks, they didn't offer that. Transfer cases and front suspension plates. And with us not just being on the street, we go off into, you know, the tundra there a little bit sometimes, those are packages that we feel that we need, so we don't do further damage to the vehicle and cost maintenance down the road.
And we sent out to three, we have four dealerships, so the one is, we don't even consider them, or...
Which being Dan Porter?
Dan Porter.
We did not send them out to Dan Porter, no.
Because I know we had Tundras in the fleet before.
My question is if we go back to them and say, "We're okay with a few things that we don't want here," can we get it within the price? I mean, the two bids are so far apart that it's a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
And then even the bid you want to accept is over budget by a couple grand almost.
Yeah, we can definitely go back to them. One of the things that pretty much kicked them out from the beginning is the process wasn't followed with the sealed bid and all that good stuff. We're just following the process that had been set forth prior to...
I just think that, I mean, I think all of them should be included when we send the bids out. I mean, a half-done truck's a half-done truck. I could see if we're looking at a specialty truck, or three-quarter tonner, tonner, Toyota's not involved. I mean, they just don't make that animal, so... But I think, I think everybody should be included locally, and it is above budget. So, do we ever have a process where we as a city, especially in this bidding process, I mean, we just send the bids out, do we ever have like instructions, I mean, to exactly what, I mean, there were so many things wrong with this one bid. It just, they just disregarded it, you think they hurried it, I mean, between you, Mr. Clem, Mrs. Zeraf...
Yeah, the bid proposal that's sent out to all the three individuals is line items, exactly what the specifications are that we're requiring, what we're looking for, and as you look through the memorandum, a lot of them, they didn't offer, they didn't even, on the Charminow side, you know, the power 10-way driver in the seat, and just a lot of stuff that they didn't offer that was standard. They all got the same bid, standard bid specs that was sent out to all three of them.
Mr. President, if this is not a mission stopper from Public Works, we can relook the process and send it out again.
Definitely.
And include the other vendor, if that makes the most sense. If it's not, if the Public Works Director can say this is not a mission stopper at this point, we can tee this up again.
President Decker and Administrator Winningham, it is not. I mean, it's a pickup. At this level of purchase, you know, we don't have to publicly advertise and go through all that process. So we do try to, you know, touch it and send out to everybody we know locally, and look at state bids. I'm not sure why Toyota, I guess, but, you know, we try to do the due process in identifying exactly what we want in the specs and send it out to everybody we know. So we try to be as open as we can on it all, and if you see anything that you want differently that we can include, sure let us know.
I mean, my personal feeling is I'd like at least to give the Toyota guys an opportunity. I mean, Dan Porter, they're the four local, and again, it's a, it's a, it's a half-ton truck. I mean, if you're talking specialty truck, you know, where you need a big chassis, I understand that. You're going to probably go with one of the big three, but...
I don't think Mr. Clem agrees, I don't think this is a deal breaker.
No, no, definitely not.
Should we just make a motion to reject the bids and re-bid it, or...
Well, it is over, so, yeah. Is that your motion to reject the bid?
Yeah, I'd make that motion, no.
Okay. Do I have a motion to reject the bid? So by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion?
I'll just make a comment, Mr. President. Mr. President, that's good guidance, I think we can go back and relook that so we can continue to, you know, support the local vendors when we look at items that could be common across the board, especially with a half-ton truck. That's good guidance, so thank you for that.
Yeah, definitely. We'll sit down with Charminow and give him a little opportunity.
Mr. Oderman?
You know, one thing I'd like to know, it shouldn't be too much to ask for people to follow the appropriate sealed bid process, so I mean, if we can do, whatever we do to encourage our vendors to do that, you know, there shouldn't be too much to ask.
And President Decker, if we did include all vendors that you wanted, I mean, if it is not a sealed bid, I mean, I would have to refer to the city attorney Winkell, that usually, it doesn't meet those qualifications, they're thrown out right away.
I'm fine with if they didn't adhere to that process.
They did not, sir.
Right.
Mr. President, Commissioners, typically, again, there's the threshold, there's the $200,000 threshold, anytime it's above and beyond that, that the bid process is required, it's strict, it must be followed. I would recommend that if you set the standard, the standard should be met by all people, all bidders. That way, everyone is playing on equal footing, and it's on a level playing field, and everyone is operating by the same set of standards. If that is the standard that has been set forth by the city staff, then I believe that is the standard that should be adhered to by the individuals that are submitting the bids.
Like I said, I don't have a problem that we're going to reject it because it wasn't to the standard. I just would like to see that if we're on something that's very common, that we give everybody the opportunity across the board to bid this, so. So we have a motion to reject this bid by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we have our public hearing at 5:00 PM, for public comments, not on the agenda, but before that, we have some recognitions that we'd like to get to, and I think we have a majority of those individuals here. Mr. Winningham?
Yes, Mr. President, I see, I see we do. So the first one up, this is something that we were going to implement as part of our city employees and city government, is just a brief recognition for certain employees for acts that we feel we want to be recognized publicly or acknowledged in front of the Commission. And we'll grow this process as we go down the road this year, and hopefully be able to inspire others to continue to do great work. We can't see all of the great work that occurs within city government, but if we can capture the ones that are the most pressing, and then we can acknowledge them, I think it'll bring goodness to what we're trying to accomplish, to help that our employees do better for the citizens. The first one up, and Ms. Shelley Nomenek, if you would come up and stand here, I know you may not like to do that, but I want to read this letter of acknowledgement. This is from the Society of Human Resource Management. They're pleased to announce that Shelley Nomenek was, has successfully passed the Society of Human Resource Management Certified Professional Certificate Examination. More specifically, this rigorous examination assessed Shelley's HR expertise in four HR knowledge domains, people, organization, workplace, and strategy. Additionally, situational judgment, questions-tested comprehension of eight behavioral competencies, leadership and navigation, business acumen, ethical practice, relationship management, consultation, critical evaluation, global and cultural effectiveness, and communication. In summary, this credential affirms that Shelley has not only mastered technical HR knowledge, but also the ability to effectively apply that knowledge in the workplace. I just want to acknowledge with a certificate of achievement, this is just something that we can just say, "Thank you for all your hard work," and we'd like to inspire others to continue to be certified to do their great work for the city. This acknowledges that Shelley Nomenek has successfully completed the requirement for that examination. And next up, I'll have Loretta join me up here. Looking for Mark, is he in the room? I'm not going to say, Mark, come up and say a few words, I'm not going to do that. I'm just glad you're here. This is a certificate of recognition, what it asks directors to do is to provide some data for some employees that they feel have gone above and beyond during their service here. So I'm just going to read this recognition, then I'll have you talk about Mark a little bit. Certificate of Recognition, this acknowledges that engineering technician Mark Essler earned this recognition by consistently providing remarkable customer service, extreme diligence in his duty to the public. His work ethic and dedication are an example for all to follow. Mark, if you'd like to just take this certificate. Well done.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Loretta.
Just wanted to say a few words about Mark. I've had the privilege of working with Mark since I began my employment here. He's going on his 16th year of service as an engineering tech, and he has wonderful work ethic that is hard to come by, I think, these days. He also has wonderful customer service skills, even then, when things get really difficult... difficult, Mark always has a wonderful attitude and is very positive and is always working to help the public. So, again, I want to thank Mark for his service, and I'm glad that he is part of our team. However, I get to bring up that Mark is retiring this month, so we will lose him in our engineering department, but we are lucky to have had him this long, and we look, hope he has enjoyment with his family and ongoing endeavors in his spare time. So, thanks again, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
And lastly, but not finally, I'll just like to say a quick story, and if I'll have Lieutenant Scott and your firefighters, if you'd come up and stand as close as you think, you've got your masks on, so you're good. And I'll paint the quick picture here. While out on a walk with his owner, Jack, the Alaskan Husky, wandered off and onto the Heart River where he fell through. Another person walking their dog heard Jack's cries as he struggled in the freezing water and called 911. Quickly springing into action, Lieutenant Tyler Scott, firefighter Jared Rode, firefighter Michael Roy, and firefighter Mason Geiger slid a ladder onto the ice, coaxing Jack to climb on, pulling him free and rescuing him. Once Jack was pulled to safety, he warmed up and he returned to his owner. It's just one small example of what our firefighters and our responders do on a daily basis. We don't often get to recognize that. This is one that came to my attention, and so I felt compelled to recognize them. Each of you will just receive a certificate of recognition. This one is to Lieutenant Tyler Scott. This acknowledges that Fire Lieutenant Tyler Scott earned this recognition by exceptionally performing his duties as fire lieutenant while rescuing a stranded dog that had fallen into a frozen river, 16 November 2020. Your dedication to duty brings great credit upon you, your teammates, and the city of Dickinson. Signed by me on this day, January 5th, 2020. Each of you receive the same certificate. This is for firefighter Roy. Well done. Firefighter Geiger? Well done. And firefighter Rode. Am I saying that right?
Roadie.
Roadie? Man, I was so close. Okay. Has it? Okay, no longer with me. Firefighter Rode. Well done, gentlemen, well done. Mr. President, that concludes my portion of the recognition, and I'll turn it over.
All right, thank you, Ms. Winningham, and thank you all for your service to our great city. Every day that you represent us makes us all proud, so. It is 5:00, and before we proceed in, we have one other award, but before we proceed on to that, I would like to open it up. If there's anybody in the public, the public hearing at 5:00 PM, come up to the mic or call into 701-456-7006, and let us know if you have any concerns that are not on our agenda. Again, if you have any concerns not on our agenda, please come forward. Or you may call 701-456-7006. Anyone have any concerns not on the agenda? Anyone? Hearing no calls and seeing no one in the room has any concerns? Hang up. We'll close the public hearing, and our last award to top off this great evening will be presented by Chief Dossinger and Sheriff Lee.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. At this time, the Dickinson Police Department and the Starr County Sheriff's Department would like to thank Dr. Dennis Wolfe for his years of service to our community and the role of coroner for over 50 years. We have presented, developed the plaque that we'd like to present to him at this time.
Congratulations. That ends our public hearing and public comments section and the awards section, so we'll move into the commission section. Commissioners, are there any items that were not on the agenda this evening that the commission would like to discuss? We're on a little bit of a delay, so I'll wait for Mr. Oderman. All right. Seeing nothing from Mr. Oderman?
Just a guest table. In the honor of gratitude that we've been going through, thank you Administrator Winningham for, for adding these to our meeting. This is great to see all the good things that are happening in our community.
Agreed. Oh, I have somebody calling in. Huh, interesting. Hello? Okay, nobody. Press 3. All right. That's uneventful. Okay, so, finishing up that portion from Commissioner Sobeluk. I think this is a great thing, to recognize the hard work that every city employee does on a daily basis, so. Agreed. There are no other items? I'd look for a motion to adjourn. So, move.
Second.
We are adjourned.